All right, good evening, Littleton. Welcome to the September 22nd Select Board meeting. It's 6:30 PM, so we'll go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll just roll over the agenda real quick. We're gonna go over the mail. We'll have a recognition of some Girl Scouts for a Silver Award, and then we'll start a joint meeting with the Finance Committee at 6:45, followed by Department and Board updates and requests, of which there are many. We'll move on at 8:15 to public input and members' updates. At 8:30, we'll do a couple appointments to the Conservation Commission and Littleton Community Television, 8:35. We'll discuss the Orchard Plan and annual Orchard monitoring. 9 o'clock, we'll get an update from our Town Administrator, and then we'll have minutes, and we will adjourn promptly at 9:15.
Says you.
Says me.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Select Board. We have current vacancies on the town boards. The following are appointed by the Select Board: the Agricultural Commission Committee for the Exploration of Real Estate Tax Relief for Seniors, Conservation Commission, Disability Commission, Economic Development Committee, Littleton Community Television Advisory Committee, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Personnel Advisory Committee, Sustainability Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals. Appointments by the School Committee, there is one opening on the Finance Committee, and appointment by LALWD, Littleton Electric Light and Water Department, also on their Finance Committee. Sign up to receive public notifications for the Town of Littleton. Scan the QR code on the screen or register with www.littletonma.org/subscribe. Community impacts, public safety activity, town meeting changes, town events, public health concerns, transportation issues, community impacts, stay informed. Here we've got a notification to a butters for work that is to be done at 19 Ipswich Drive. The name of the applicant is Crown Castle Properties, but because the town has property within approximately, I think it's 200 feet of this project, we are to be notified, and there's a demolition of an existing single-family dwelling structure with a plan to build new. Here we have, as a result of the Select Board providing me with the authority to issue one-day licenses on the condition that public safety did not have a problem with it, I issued a one-day license to Derigible, and that of 24 Porter Road in Littleton, and it was going to be a five-hour wine and beer license for the hours of 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM on October 4th, 2025, for the community event at 36 King Street.
Is that Oktoberfest?
It is. Here we have another one, and it's granted for a five-hour wine and beer license from 12 to 5 on October 4th, 2025, certified tavern in the square, again, also for the Oktoberfest at 36 King Street. And here we have recognition.
Great.
Madam Chair.
All right.
Thank you.
We're, is there someone who'd like to speak on behalf of the Girl Scouts?
All right, so we have three Girl Scouts who are here, and they created a project which culminated in their Silver Award, which is the second highest award in Girl Scouting, to make an improvement to Brony Park. So could we have you each come up? Amelia Myers, Ciara Miller, and Catherine Smith. So why don't you guys share what you did?
If I could ask, would you guys mind talking from the podium so LCTV can pick up?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Someone has to talk.
Basically, we repaired the boardwalk at Brony Park, because it was...
I said the wrong park.
Oh.
Do you remember?
What?
At Conant Park.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You weren't helping air out.
My other trick was that's...
Okay.
At Conant Park, because the boards were rotting and were just very unsafe for the community.
That's good.
That's important.
Can you tell us a little bit about the process?
So we raised money with babysitting fundraisers, and so we bought supplies, used ones that we currently had, and used tools and stuff, and took out the boards that were in the worst condition and replaced them.
Fantastic. Can you tell us a little bit about the Silver Award? What are the objectives of the Silver Award?
To make an impact to the community that will, like, it's like our hoopla player or co-hoopla player said, it's the second highest honor in Girl Scouts, so it's basically an act that you do for the community that will positively affect it and make it, like, basically what we did was make it safer for, like, hikers or people taking walks and stuff.
Yeah, that's fantastic. That's commendable.
How many hours, do you guys remember how many hours we had to put in?
We had to have at least 50 hours of work to, like, get it, get the, yeah, to qualify, thank you.
Yeah. And it's verified work, it's not just...
Yeah.
No, I was there.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations to all three of you. It's a tremendous amount of work, and I hope you're all as proud of yourselves as we are of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we do a picture real quick?
Okay, let's see, okay, good. Hold up the sign. Good. The awards are out. One, two, three, one more. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I used to be that shy once.
Hard to believe.
Ran out of the crib.
Yeah, all right, are we gonna go out of order?
No.
No?
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you ready to go ahead? We could go out of order, yeah.
Of course.
Sure, why don't we do that?
Perfect, thanks so much.
What number is it? 4A.
4A, yeah.
Well, thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Doug Landry, Lieutenant Landry with the Police Department. Honored to be here tonight to bring forward to you Thomas Farr, TJ, goes by TJ. Thomas is someone who we wanted to bring in front of you for appointments tonight. You know, we've had two openings recently with some of our officers that moved on, and that process went out a couple weeks ago. Fortunately for us, TJ was in the finishing process of the Pittsburgh State Police Academy that graduated last Friday. So a quick turnaround for us, we got him in quickly, and he was happy, we were honored that he graduated the academy with our patches on. The town really helped us out, get him through the process quickly from that regard, in the background checks and such. But in that process, we really got to know TJ as a quality candidate, super qualified, new police officer coming into this position, profession, excuse me, but experience and a resume that comes with him. Worked three years for the Nantucket Police Department in their community policing role that they have through the internship program. Excuse me, worked for the Pittsburgh State in their civilian traffic program, participated in the Pittsburgh State Police Program, as I mentioned, which is the four-year college process, that in that process, they are able to obtain training towards the police academy, have a quick academy towards the end of their senior semester, and in that have already started their master's degree. So he's working on that as well, so we're excited we're getting an educated, well-trained officer here in Littleton. Happy to bring him in front of you guys tonight if you have any questions. His family's here, his friends are here, I'm sure he'd love to answer any questions you have for him in front of the crew, but thank you so much for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Did you have any?
Sorry.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Thank you, Lieutenant Landry. Nice welcoming. Thank you for the members of the Select Board for meeting tonight. Excited, eager, and can't wait to get started.
We're thrilled to have you. I talked to the chief shortly before your interview, and he said, "Well, I hope this guy works out." So I think it worked out pretty well for both of us, so thanks very much. We're pleased that you chose Littleton, and we're looking forward to having you with us for a long time.
Thank you very much.
Did you get any time off at all?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I graduated September 12th, had a nice little week to relax.
A whole week.
A whole week.
Welcome, you're joining a great department.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
I did have a question. So how did you land Nantucket?
I was a freshman, and I went to a career fair, and I spoke with some of their officers, and I went home to my mom, showed her a pamphlet, and she was like, "Are you not gonna go to the island?"
For three years, too.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Outstanding.
Mom's always the best.
Yeah.
You could probably ask, I knew some people in the department that may have worked in Nantucket early in their careers, too. Lieutenant, do you know of any?
Yeah, it was 2008 to 2012, I was started there as well, so...
It's a great department, you can learn a lot from the folks that are around you, and I'm sure they can learn from you as well, so welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Great, welcome.
Thanks, yeah, welcome.
Welcome along.
Can we get a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Should we vote? Should we actually vote?
I got it. Let it get a vote through first. Gonna make sure we get it unanimous, or at least...
You're so excited.
Three out of five.
It's gonna be at 7:00 AM tomorrow, the awards.
Okay, slacker. All right, moved at the Select Board, vote to appoint Thomas J. Farr as police officer with the Littleton Police Department.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you so much. You guys wanna get a picture? If you don't mind.
Congratulations.
We got some good support here.
It's very important.
Oh, of course, absolutely. I'm sorry. You're gonna get in there for the next one. Get in there.
Just dab. There's a lot of us here just waiting for this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
I think it's tomorrow, right?
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You, too.
Thank you.
Literally scary.
Well, the coast has to shake hands with all the things, it drives about 85 miles.
You just admitted it. Sorry, sunshine. All right, she does it all. She does it all. Total package.
Mr. Chairman.
We have a quorum, we are in session. I'd just like to introduce...
Yes, please.
Rick Kingsley to everybody. He's the school committee appointee. There was a little hiccup with the school committee. He was affirmed by the school committee, but unfortunately, they didn't post that they were doing this appointment, so Diane has allowed him to be part of this, but he cannot vote tonight.
Understood.
He will be appointed at the school committee's next meeting.
Well, thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Be plenty of pictures with him, I think.
Chuck's feeling very boisterous today. All right. We've got a warrant review.
Before we get started, we have one other thing on our agenda. We have a Finance Committee appointment to the Community Preservation Committee, and do I have a nomination for...
Nominate Sanjay Gupta for the CPC seat.
Second.
Is that news to you, Sanjay?
Low man in the totem pole, you know what happens. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Do you need to meet Diane to get someone in to get the committee? I'll say.
What we have, I'm sorry, thank you. What we have, we had an intern, we had, over the course of many weeks, we had an internal team that identified the articles that are gonna be presented at town meeting, and that team included the finance team with our finance director, the town clerk, town council, our town planner, HR director, to really shape the language of all of the articles before you this evening. So a lot of additions, edits, I should say, a lot of edits have gone into this. I think what's before you is the 14th version, and it's probably gonna be the 15th version after tonight. But we feel that we've captured all the necessary language and for town meeting. I recommend that, and request that the Select Board and Finance Committee review the articles. And before you is the vote to review the warrant, approve the order of articles, vote to insert articles, adopt article recommendations, and close the warrant. We're not going to, tonight, we're not gonna do the placement. Diane, that is correct, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, not gonna do the placement. This meeting will be at the next meeting. When does the warrant have to be? When is it?
Yeah, we have plenty of time for the warrant, so the next meeting that you have, we'll have the full warrant out, so the town meeting articles need to be to the printer by Thursday, so this needs to be approved tonight and have it all in form that we need, which we have before you, and this has to be approved tonight so that we can get it to the printer, and it has to be out by Thursday, so this has to be approved tonight.
In fact, can I ask a question? This first motion is not approving or disapproving of the articles, it's just as it says, the order and approving the articles themselves.
Correct.
Are we later tonight gonna do the approve/disapprove?
You going through that this evening also?
Okay.
Yes.
So theirs is just the recommendation of the finance articles?
Correct. Right, that are pertaining to any financial articles, that's what, exactly.
Is that the only reason that you guys are here tonight is just for the warrant, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we wanna do the finance articles first, where we can keep, move them off. So debt exclusions first, or...
It's SBA Finance Committee, well, School Committee and Shaker Lane Building Committee.
So just on the articles in general, do we have an idea of the ones that will be on the consent agenda? I'm a little, I don't know, I want Shaker Lane to be first, I don't know it should be first, because I think people are gonna be still filing in, so, I mean, if we start the town meeting at 7, I'd like, think you'd want it to be at like 7:15, not 7.
Or 7:30, yeah.
But we have the star-spangled banner and, you know, and Tim going through the rules and the consent agenda.
And the clickers.
So it probably will take 15, 20, 30 minutes until we get the first article.
Regardless, consent agenda comes first. Correct?
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And looking at the warrant, I think there are only a few articles that would be appropriate for consent agenda, so it really will be just a few minutes' time before we get, I know that a lot of people are gonna be looking to get Article 1 pretty quickly. And just a few of them there, the bylaw amendments regarding changes in job titles, I think, aren't really substantive changes, those would be appropriate to trust fund, transfers, access to Mass General Law 208, Section 9A. Some of the other ones, the new awkward pedal of bylaw is a wholesale change from what was not in the bylaw, so I think that wouldn't be appropriate, because that's changing completely, and people might have something they wanna talk about that. So maybe about half of them, and there's a resolution and a citizen petition that wouldn't be appropriate either, so it's a short warrant, so I think maybe four or five, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be a lot.
And we'll handle that before Article 1. And Article 1 has presentations as well, so...
Yep.
If folks are running a little late, they'll still be coming in during the presentations, likely not the vote itself.
And, I mean, there's a meeting before you and the vice chair will meet, you guys have a meeting a couple days before to really iron this out, right, so, thank you.
So my other question is, should Article 12 be moved closer to the, I mean, we have a Shaker Lane article as the first one and almost the last one, should they be moved closer together?
You mean Article 14?
It's Article, it's Article 12, amend previous vote on Shaker Lane.
Stabilization.
The $55?
Seven, oh, yeah. It really shouldn't be titled "School Stabilization."
No, what is that?
Yeah, that's the moving, allowing us to move $53, I think, right?
Well, that's huge.
I've seen half-hour discussions over that dollar value.
It's just to amend the $700,000 to include the design with construction and feasibility, so it's all in one, that's all it is. So I don't know why it's "School Building Stave," it's not right. To amend the... Mend Article 23 for May 2nd, 2022.
The way that one reads, it's like we're using the $53 to help build the school instead of, like, if you read the wording, it says, "There is 53, 55, and unused funds. The amendment will allow the town to use the remaining funds for design and construction."
It's the MSBA reimbursement.
It's the reimbursement that will be used, and...
But it sounds like we're talking about the $53 in that sentence.
I don't think the $53 should be even in this description, it's taken right out.
Okay.
That's making it confusing.
Yeah.
All right, I'll eliminate it.
On the school book.
So we're talking about that article, all it is, is we received reimbursement on the study, we need to change the use of those funds, because it's more than the second vote, which was 385, which was for construction and feasibility. The original vote for the 700 was only for the feasibility, so we need to be able to use those MSBA funds in the project.
This happens almost every vote, every construction project.
Yes, yes.
Steve, do you have any thoughts on moving it up towards, closer to Article 1?
I don't think it really matters.
Yeah.
So on the screen, it calls it "School Building Stabilization," but in the printed, in our packet, it calls it "Amend vote previous vote on Shaker Lane."
That's what it should be.
It should be amend vote on, so if it says that, I think it needs to be moved earlier, because, so, just so that the people that are there for Shaker Lane unders, don't, if they think they have to stay for that one, then they don't have to stay till the end, right? That's just my, it'll avoid confusion of people that aren't normally at town meeting.
If it doesn't pass, I don't even think it gets brought forward.
Yeah, so you wanna make a number two?
Yeah, we can do that.
Just so they're together.
That's fine.
Make 12 number two.
12 number two.
And it's gonna be amend vote on Shaker Lane, it will be the second article, right after Shaker Lane debt exclusion.
So you'll do Shaker Lane first, and then that second?
Yeah, because if that first one doesn't pass, and the second one, we pull, so...
Okay.
Whose article is that?
Madam...
Article 12? That's ours.
Madam Chair, if I can please request a five-minute recess, I would like to talk with yourself and Chairman Genucci, just about an expectation of personnel being here tonight, they'll be about 30 minutes behind.
Okay.
Okay?
So you want a five-minute recess?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you want to get the switch? I did.
Form directions.
All right, welcome back. We're going to take an item out of order, we're gonna go ahead and hear from Mr. Yonley to review some, to vote on a couple contracts.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah.
For the record, Stephen Allen, Director of Public Works, he had tonight with two requests, awards for contracts. I don't know what he got for us. I don't know what he got for paving one.
Yeah.
Yep, so we opened bids back early September. I just missed the deadline for the last meeting. But this is a contract for $573,372.50 for paving on Newtown Road, Mill Road, the Foster Street side of Mill. Beaverbrook Road, and then a small portion of Harvard Road is also included in this up the hill from Picket Farm. It's coming apart a little bit. Want to get that before it gets worse. Work is anticipated to start kind of the middle of October and be done about the first week of November, obviously weather permitting, in that effect schedules. But we received seven bids on this. Bids came in lower than what was estimated, so still a very competitive bidding market for this type of work. So again, look for your approval for this contract.
Anybody have any questions?
One, it's just simple, is, does any of this ever include sidewalks when we're, when we're dealing with the roads? Does any of the contracts ever include?
Not on these particular roads.
Or, I'm just guessing, as we build a lot more sidewalks in town, obviously, do they become part of these?
Yep, so one of my next kind of larger projects to look at is Harwood from the depot coming out.
Yeah.
Especially by Mill Pond where that culvert is going to need some attention. We have sidewalk design on the other side of the culvert going up to Foster Street on Harwood. So that project would include sidewalks because ultimately then you get the loop, you have connections into Foster Street and that type of thing. So certain places, absolutely.
Okay. That was the only question.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Move that select board vote to authorize Town Administrator James A. Duggan to enter into a contract with PJ Keating in the amount of $573,372.50 for resurfacing and related work Newtown Road in various locations.
Second. Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And secondly is new bid for the disposal of solid waste and recycling from the transfer station. And if you remember, a couple of years ago, I think the board was the same as it is here, we combined in the municipal dumpsters into that for the savings. Continued with that into, for one bidder. We had three companies bid and obviously now we've added Center on Chattock, 36 King Street, Social and additional dumpsters. Waste Management is the company that won the bid. They were the company that had the bid before, but we received bids from two other qualified bidders. And to be qualified, you had to have facilities within a certain radius of the town for us to deliver the materials from the transfer station. So again, I just look for your approval for this. And this bid is, was structured the same. It is a one-year bid, but we do have the ability within language to extend for an additional two years, which is what we did with the previous bid.
I had a question. If there was going to be another site identified or in another dumpster, does that require a new procurement or are we able to roll that into this?
We were able to roll these in.
Okay.
If we're adding an additional one to the ones that are in.
Yeah, we could, that's just what we did just now with Center on Chattock and 36 King Street added it.
And this, but this doesn't cover the schools?
No.
They're on their own. Did we ever look at consolidating that, if there would be any cost savings if we?
I'd like, certainly happy to speak with them.
It was something that was looked at years ago. Business manager and.
Like, we were having a lot of changes in the last five years, I hope, but.
All right.
Run different cycles at the time.
Yeah, well, then when your term for this initially would give, might, might be time to look at it again.
Okay, move that the select board vote to authorize the Town Administrator James A. Duggan to enter into a contract with Waste Management of Massachusetts in the amount of $202,286 for solid waste and recycling disposal in municipal buildings dumpster collection.
Second. Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Real quick, while you're there, at town meeting, there was talk of the new, new plastic dumpsters and more of a single stream for the recycling. Do you, is there an update on when that will be?
So the compactor and everything has been awarded. It was expected to be delivered to the company we had to install at the end of this month. Then they, they need to do a little bit of fab work, so I would expect by middle to end of October, where you're at least seeing installation and will be in operation before winter.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
For our holiday cardboard.
Amazon and Chewy, right?
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Steve. Yeah.
Are we ready to?
Don't think we're going to go to Article One. We're missing a chair. A member, so.
Why don't we just go through the warrant, accept the articles that you're waiting for inputting?
All right, you're back.
I'm back, sorry.
No problem. Sure Steve appreciates it. So I think we'll skip Article One for now and we'll move on to Article Two. What's in there? What's in here is Article Two.
Built the prior year.
Anybody?
It's all from the fire department.
It's all from the fire department, yeah.
The fire department.
Just troublemakers over there.
Again. Anybody have any issues or questions? Okay. Article Three.
It's just, it's really fun to collect the bargaining agreement that we came to after many, many weeks with the police union that we were able to, to do that. So it bypassed the last town meeting for this article and underway to this one.
This backbase contract to July 1st?
Yes, to 2024. Yeah.
Any questions?
So the, so there's a one, Item Two says it's $112 from the stabilization fund. Item Three says the budget's going up $282, so the other 170 is coming from?
That's what was originally was budgeted. That was set aside for contract negotiations.
170 was?
Yes.
But that's not what the motion says. It says we're going up 282.
So it's two different fiscal years.
Correct.
First fiscal year is $112,000 to pay for FY '25 salaries.
Okay.
$282,000 to pay for FY '26 salaries.
Okay. And the 282 is already in the budget? Where's the 282?
We had it reserved, yes.
It's reserved, yes. So now we're appropriating it.
Okay, thank you.
You good?
And if this article doesn't pass, you know, can pay.
Correct.
Article Four.
Exactly. Article Four is merged into Article Three, so.
That's the use of the salary stabilization into the collective bargaining.
Yeah, he made it in one, so.
Okay. So we can move on to Article Five.
Correct.
Accepting the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A.
Wait, wait, hold on. Article Four is trust funds.
Oh, so it's wrong on this?
So it's wrong in the packet. It's, the report is, Article Four is the trust funds. In the, in the warrant, in the report.
Which is now Article Five.
Let's just go by the numbers on the.
Yeah, on the screen, yeah.
Yep.
Are you using this?
Nope.
I'm using what, what's up here. The most recent version.
So trust funds is the NOOC pods. Anybody have questions about the NOOC pods?
Nope.
Okay.
You good?
Yep. Now we're moving on to Article Five. Accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A. An alternative procedure for abandoned funds.
So the state, it defaults to the state if we don't vote us in? Any excess funds, if we, taxable funds for foreclosure?
Can we change the title to accept to, except, you know, change something about, accept an alternative procedure for abandoned funds? Because people are just going to look at what, no one's going to know what Mass General Law 200A, 9A is. It's going to just be confusing if we don't have a.
You want a parenthetical in there, just to see where it is?
At least make the, make the title more like the recommend, like the bolded. I think that would help.
Okay.
I had to look up what 200A, 9, I looked, I read it today to understand what it was, so.
Well, I mean, it says so in the first paragraph.
It's, yeah, well, it says, it creates an alternative. It doesn't tell you what the alternative is.
Okay.
Right, but.
Okay. Are we good?
Yep.
Article Six. Bylaw amendment to change the Hawker Pedler bylaw. And that's.
Yeah, so in the past several years, we've had a lot of complaints of people doing Hawker Pedlers throughout the town. We have a large constituency of seniors in our town. A lot of people do not come to the clerk's office and get licenses to be out there. So in speaking with Chief Bernard, we talked a lot about changing the bylaw. He went to another town, found another town that actually has this no-knock. We had looked into it. And basically what it'll do is put, the residents can sign up for no-knock and any Hawker Pedler that doesn't come to the town office, if they were to go to any, and as well, anybody that actually signs up and gets a license, if they go to a person's home that has a no-knock, they will stop being fined. So it gives us a lot more teeth to be able to make the residents feel a lot more comfortable, know that they have a little bit of leverage over people that are out there doing the pedaling. And it also gives the police department a lot more leverage as to what they can do.
So I was reading this and the definition of a person is very broad, but then we get to the background and it's, obviously that's on an individual basis. So the idea is that pest control company A knows that they're going to send certain people and they need to submit those particular people for background checks at least two weeks in advance?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, and what's nice about this as well, so quite often a company will come and say, "We're going to send six people." We get pictures of all those people. We do do background checks on those people. And then they end up sending other people. We tell our residents to ask for the permit that they have and they have the picture of the person that's on, that's supposed to be out there. And quite often the resident doesn't ask, but they'll say, "Oh, yeah, here it is." And they kind of flash the badge and they don't really see the face on, on the badge. So now they really have to have that and show that. And if they don't show that, then they can call police as well. So it again gives a little more leverage.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, there's, we're, we're going to hold a hearing on an appeal within 72 hours, but how can we do that with open meeting law? If someone posted something on Friday, it says that we. They sent you something on Friday that's requested hearing. There's no way we, by the time it got through the process, we couldn't do it within 72 hours, right?
It's been approved, this has been approved by the Attorney General.
Okay.
So, I mean, obviously if we know that they're requesting a hearing, we would tell them that we can't do it and, you know, because we can't count to, you know, obviously the 72 hours has to be in our time, which has to be business days. Can't be 72 hours, which includes a Saturday and a Sunday.
Yeah, it doesn't say business. It should probably say.
Change that to business.
Three business days or something like that.
We can change that.
No, it says the select board shall hear its appeal at its next scheduled meeting, not less than 72 hours after. So it has to be, it's the next scheduled meeting, but it can't be 72 hours. So it's, it's got to be more than three days, right?
Right.
Okay.
I think that's just for that reason.
Okay.
Could be up to 10.
Article Seven. King Street Channel Stabilization Fund.
Is the intention that we'll have the amount that we want to transfer on the night of town meeting?
Yes, if not before.
Okay.
So this, we should have some, I guess, flexibility when the time comes, Jim?
Sorry.
So the reason we kind of offered up the reserve fund was to pay the vendors timely, but this has been going on for whatever. So if it gets kind of close.
Yep.
I would say, if it's okay with the select board, use your judgment.
Okay.
Whether this article just becomes a straight transfer out of general stabilization, you get the reserve fund out of it and you don't have to have us meet to do it. Just do it straight. But again, it's the vendors being paid timely.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So are you going to make a recommendation on that article tonight?
I don't know what we're recommending.
So we don't even vote on it tonight? Is it pending?
Do it when we see the article, yeah.
All right. So no.
Article Eight. Bylaw amendment regarding posting a warrant.
Again, it's, at this point in time, we have to post the warrant in eight meeting houses. We're looking to just change it to three, which would be the two post offices and here. Right now, we have to post it at all of the churches, as well as the post offices and here. As you may know, one of the churches is closing, so that would decrease one of our locations that we already are posting at. So this is really giving us the opportunity to make changes that are good for everyone. We are going to be in three different precincts, so it covers three different precincts. The two post offices are in one precinct and Tom Hall is in the third precinct.
It also helps us to evolve towards technology and.
More modern.
Change pretty bit, yeah.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Article Nine. Increased to income limits.
Yeah, I just came up through the, with the select board, we're going to put this forward. This, we're just trying to get this on the books to have the circuit breaker. We're going to start matching what the state allows so that every time the state increases that amount, we move with it as opposed to having to wait for town meeting and vote. This is for benefits specific to our seniors with their eligibility, income requirement thresholds for eligibility to some of the programs that we have, TRED and things like that. So it's, it increases it from, I think, it's currently 55, I think it goes up to 72 now. Is that right?
Yes.
We should see a, maybe an uptick in, people will be captured in that. Not, it won't be very significant this year, but hopefully in future years, we might be able to get a few more people that are eligible for some of the, the benefits that the town has to offer under this chapter.
So again, can we change the title to just increased income limits for senior tax relief or something rather than having the Mass General Law in there? So it's, and it's, I also got a misprint anyway. It just says dot L, dot. So if, just say increasing, increase to income limits for senior tax relief or something like that. Just to make it more descriptive for people.
Yeah, it's 41A, so I guess you could define 41A, whatever that.
We define that in the text, but.
So just change, just take out the Mass General Law's, Chapter 59, just take out that stuff and just have an increase. that stuff, and just have increase to income, income limits for senior tax relief.
Tax deferral program, yeah.
This is similar to what we did a year or two, a couple of years ago, regarding the threshold for work-off program, correct? It was at 1,500.
Right.
And the state allowed us to move that up to 2,000.
That's true.
And at that time, we, we basically just said that the future, the same type of article came forward and said, we don't have to keep going back to town meeting every, every time. We will increase as the state allows us to increase, and we can maximize those programs for our seniors and, and veterans.
Okay. Article 10, bylaw amendment regarding Director of Veterans Services.
I think these next two articles are housekeeping articles. We have, as Tom Cork and I have discussed, we are to have a Director of, Director of Veterans Services beyond VSO. And so that's what this, this article does. And it was, it's, instead of having an annual appointment by the Select Board, it is something for a term of up to three years. And with the title change of Director of Veterans Services.
That all made sense to me.
Does it currently say Director of Veterans Services, or says Veterans Agent?
It's a Veterans Service Officer, I believe.
VSO, yes, Veterans Service Officer.
A lot of towns have a Director of Veterans Services and a VSO. So the director position should really be the first one, and they can be the VSO, of course. But as you grow, you're going to want to have, some of the communities have several VSOs and a Director of Veterans Services, depending on the size of the community, so.
Same thing applies to our Health Director, as we have, but he, he acts as the agent, the health agent also.
I, well, it doesn't pertain to the warrant, I was just thinking, there probably needs to be job descriptions for the both of those.
Yeah.
Positions.
That's, that would have to follow up. There's one for the VSO, at least.
Right. Okay. Article 11, bylaw amendment regarding Director of Finance and Budget Position Title.
Again, this is something that is, is housekeeping, in which we'll substitute the term Finance Director for Director of Finance and Budget through our general bylaws. Yeah, but it reflects an update to the title that was taken, that was previously taken. Michelle is, she was, she's got it down. If there's specific questions regarding this article.
It's just a, it's a floating title that you, or we, I guess, have the authority to move to several different positions, I think, from a previous meeting.
Accountant, ATA, treasure.
Treasure, all right.
Okay. Good.
Yep.
Now we're at Article 12, amend previous vote on Shaker Lane School. Which we're going to move to Article.
Two.
Two.
Correct.
And do we have any questions besides placement, or placement? No. Article 13, resolution on climate action and resilience for Town of Littleton. We're going to have a presentation on that in a little bit, so.
It's a Select.
Yeah, it's a Select Board one. If anybody has any questions on it, I would say let's hold those until after the presentation. 14 is a citizen's petition.
So let's, Finance Committee, vote our recommendations, we'll skip over Article one for now. So we have Finance Articles Two, which is billed as prior year. Three, fund collective bargaining agreements. Four, authorized transfer from trust funds. Nine.
What's five?
Increase the limits for the tax deferral program. And 12, amend the previous vote on Shaker Lane. Have any?
Well, and 14.
We should talk about 14 separately.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you don't have five? No, no.
That's five.
Transfer from the trust funds.
Four is transfer from the trust funds. And what I'm reading in front of me here, four is transfer from trust funds.
Yes, it's five.
Okay.
All right.
I have it as five.
Yeah.
Five is the provisions for the alternative disposing of abandoned funds. We could do that, is that finance, we would consider that finance? We could do five also.
Yeah.
So two, three, four, five, nine, and 12.
For finance.
With motion to recommend, do I have a second? Second by Sanjay. Any further discussion on any of these articles? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Finance Committee's in favor of two, three, four, five, nine, and 12. As printed in whatever I'm looking at.
How do we all vote after recommendation? Do we want to vote on those now?
Yeah.
And then move to the other side?
Yeah, let's go ahead and cover two, three, four, nine, five, and 12.
Okay. No questions?
No.
Motion to recommend?
Motion to recommend Articles Two, Three, Four, Five, Nine, and 12.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Do we want to take a look at Article One?
Yep. It's a small one, right?
Yeah. No big deal.
So there's been some questions about the triggering of, that we've been talking about. There's an email stream that, that went through this past week, starting with the Building Commissioner and the attorneys, and then forwarded to a smaller group, I believe, Karen and I were on it. And here's Henry now. So we've been under the, working under the assumption of a trigger of 2.73 million, which is 30% of the assessed value of the building. In analyzing a little further, and Henry's here, please correct me if I'm wrong, Henry, in anything that I say, there's two, two specific options here. Let's first deal with if the school passes. If the school passes, then the Building Commissioner has flexibility in what he would consider for things that break in the building. So if something happens, as long as it's safe, we could just fix that one thing, just put a Band-Aid on it to get it fixed, because we're going to be getting rid of the building. So the Building Commission has flexibility in what he determines needs to be done to get the building safe. So that's, if it doesn't, if it passes, does that sum it up pretty good?
It's correct.
Okay. If it doesn't pass, then there is two triggers now.
Right.
First trigger is the 2.73 million that we've been talking about. Second trigger is 50% of the square footage. If something happens that affects 50% of the square footage of the building, then we would have to upgrade the entire building to code. So two separate things. The Building Commissioner, under this, either scenario, has no flexibility in determining when the building has to go to code. It's 2.73 million, or it's 50% of the square footage that's being touched. No flexibility at all. If some, if a certain thing happens to the building, that piece of the building has to be brought up to code. So if something happened in one of the restrooms, for example, that restroom would have to be brought up to ADA accessibility.
Right.
That's correct.
If something happened at the entrance, then the entrance would have to be handicap accessible. Buttons and so forth.
Steve, if any of those hit 2.7 million, the other trigger kicks in?
If the cumulative effect of all those things over a three-year period.
Thank you, that's what I was.
Yeah.
Hit that 2.73, then the entire building needs to be done.
But as we go along, we're going to have to bring those things we touch up to code as well.
Right. So everything we touch has to be brought up to code.
Do we know what we've spent in the last three years? Like, where are we at?
I think Steve looked at this, Steve Mark looked at this, and it was like two something, 250 comes into my mind. That's, don't quote me.
What does 50% mean? Is, like, if the, if the boiler fails, it's affecting the entire school, right? Does that count towards the 50% area, or a much smaller area?
Madam Chair, Members of the Boards, the 50% is the area that's being disturbed. So if there's half the building's under construction, the other half isn't, that's how that affects. If the boiler goes, there is flexibility that allows you just to replace the boiler.
So it's what you're actually working on? It's not the, it's not the area that's affected, it's the area under construction?
Exactly.
Okay.
So one is a space trigger, and the other is a financial trigger, over a three-year period?
It's hard to imagine that 50% wouldn't hit the 2.3. And, and I very much appreciate Steve and you getting clarity, because when this whole email thread was going on, and I was like, whoa, you know, wait a minute, we were talking about one trigger, now there's another trigger, and it's like, phew, all good.
Both and.
So that means, then, if like, the roof needs to be replaced, that would affect a large portion, that would cover the 50% most likely, or not?
No. Again, it's, the level three is a reconfiguration of the space. So any office, and if half of this building was taken apart, brought down to where you're going to re, restart from scratch.
So as long as you're doing, okay.
If it's a roof, then it's to the roof, if it's mechanical, it's mechanical.
Okay.
Springless systems, reload it.
Okay. So we're not upgrading the floors? Replacing the floor tiles? No carpet?
A lot of Band-Aids.
But those Band-Aids are.
Three years.
Part of the 2.73, as, as those repairs are made.
Right.
It's part of accumulation.
But one of the things that, that was brought up, also Karen and I, and Jim met with Henry before this, the modules, for example. If the modules are within 30 feet of the building, they're considered part of the building. If they're 31 feet away, they are not considered part of the building. So all the electrical, septic and everything would count against that 2.73 if they were within 30 feet of the building.
Well, we'd make damn sure they're 31 feet.
Henry, I got a tape there, so you can borrow.
I have suspenders.
Suspenders.
It's not going to be a C. All right, so, other than the trigger, were there any questions? I did have a question myself, but if anybody else wants to go first, that's fine.
Mine was just more related to the, the speakers, who's speaking. I, I noticed on the article itself, it had School Committee, Select Board, and Finance Committee. That's, that's unusual. Normally, we're recommending, we're recommenders of articles, and the Finance Committee is a recommender of articles, but I don't believe the Finance Committee is bringing the article forward. Does that make sense?
It's actually.
So I think they should be.
The School Committee, the Select Board.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I, I think the Finance Committee needs to remove from the, the article, that's, it, they're going to be on there as a recommendation, but they don't, they're not on there as a, they're not bringing the article to town meeting. Is that okay?
But we would still, I would think it, we would still speak to it.
Yeah, because you're, right, because you have to speak toward your recommendation and the impact, but you're not bringing the article forward. That's how it's stated in the.
But it's being brought forward by. By the Shaker Lane School Building Committee, that's highlighted under Article One. So that's defined. And then any committee that has a vested interest in, or board or commissioner's got a vested interest is reflected, is referred, reflected accordingly.
Like, do you know how, like, Diane?
Oh, 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 up there, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Some of Diane's articles, it says Town Clerk.
Okay.
Then underneath that will be, who recommends it? Who's recommending?
Understood, okay.
We want to make sure.
The author of the warrant article.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Who's bringing it forward?
That's all.
So I was wondering, the second bullet point. Somewhere after that, do we want to add that the vote is contingent on approval of the November 1st Prop 2 and 1/2 override?
It's not in here anymore?
You mean add a third bullet, or after another sentence?
It says that in the motion.
It says.
It's in the motion.
It is, but I think it should be in the explanation as well. It's really key.
It is critical to the article, so just having it there as many times as possible, so people can say, okay, we voted on this, we need to show up again in three days.
Takes two votes. That's, I know that's part of the presentation, is that.
Yep. You want it in the first paragraph?
It's a bullet.
After the second.
A third bullet.
Yeah.
So after the $59 million.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. I guess it's a separate statement, it's not really a bullet.
No, it's not a bullet, it, it shouldn't be a third bullet, because those two bullets are describing the division of the funds.
Oh, fair enough.
But I agree that, like, a bold sentence.
Yeah, it should be the final statement, maybe.
Yeah, the approval of this.
Like a reminder. You could put reminder in dark, and say.
Okay. Diane, can we move a voting booth to the soccer field?
And, Madam Chairwoman, do you have a suggestion of what language you would like in here?
So I think I've got it later in the motion. We can just repeat it.
The motion itself?
Sometimes the effect of approval of the project is contingent upon affirmative vote at town meeting and an affirmative vote.
Mm-hmm.
On Saturday, the day.
A two-thirds vote at town meeting and a majority vote on November 1st, on the ballot.
This, this borrowing article is contingent upon a successful debt exclusion vote on Saturday, November 1st.
It's very elegant.
What he said.
Yeah, yeah. Because all this article really is, is just a borrowing authorization.
You could put a big reminder in bold, and then that statement, just so the people realize, you've got to show up, you know. just so the people realize, you've gotta show up, you know, in three days.
That'd be the first homework for new week, ATA, maybe.
Coming in right in on it.
All right. Is that all for Article One?
Yep.
Good?
Good, yeah.
All right.
Finance Committee? Do you have a motion to recommend Article One?
Do you wanna vote without the full committee?
We have a call.
Yeah, we need, we need the vote.
But question is, do you wanna vote without the full committee?
Yeah.
We should, we should, I think.
But never a full committee. Do you have a motion to recommend Article One? Moved by Sanjay, do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
We have our recommendation from the Finance Committee. Recommend, recommend to support Article One. A move to recommend, move to recommend support of Article One.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, in the, in the warrant, it doesn't actually have the line that says who recommended it currently in bold, like all the other ones do?
Yeah, we'll add them.
Yeah.
And Article 14?
Because then we can leave.
I was gonna mention, something that I've seen in previous select boards that we stopped doing is when we have unanimous vote versus a four-fifth vote, versus a three-fifth vote, or a four... Just so that we know, it, it's important to put in there that unanimously voted for. And I think we need to start doing that on, on all of our articles, because sometimes that dissent, the descending dissent vote needs to have say. Sometimes people like to come to the mic and say, we saw two dissenters on the Finance Committee, could you please speak to why you dissented on the article? Or, or the select board, so we can kinda get that dialogue. And I noticed that stopped, it was just recommended or didn't recommend. I was just wondering how the board felt about getting that back.
I like it.
I do, too.
So unanimously voted to recommend.
Okay.
We just unanimously voted to put unanimously voted in.
Did we also, do we need to vote to reorder at some point, to, if we're going to move?
We were gonna do the order at the...
We'll do it if the Finance Committee leave after that.
I thought they had to vote the order so that they could print it in the right order.
But that doesn't involve us.
No.
So, do we need to vote the order tonight?
Order tonight.
Okay.
What else we have for Finance, Article 14?
14, citizens' petition. So, I...
I've walked through this one.
I don't recall, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but have we weighed in on citizens' petitions before? I, I can't think of any.
But, but, but this also hasn't been one that affects our policy.
I think this one, we kinda need to, because he's, it's written that we are, we'll guarantee a million dollars be put into debt exclusion stabilization each year for this project. And, and we simply can't guarantee a million dollars to be put to this project, so...
And, and Steve, if I may, we, we have, over the years, established policies. Those policies were, Moody's, based on those policies, increased our bond rating. All due respect to the petitioner, I want any policy changes to be done by us, because the bond implications are enormous. So, I, I think we should take a stand, and I think our stand should be no.
Just to clarify, it's not just this project?
It's FinCom vote, right now, recommend.
It's every project, every project you're putting in a million. So, if we have three debt exclusions, we just put 3 million into the fund.
So, it's, it's something that we, I tried to explain to the petitioner that we can't guarantee these things, but it's still here, so...
If it passed, then we could potentially be cutting operating budgets to do it. Oh, really? In a draconian time, you, you could be in that situation, so it does not make sense for Finance Committee to support it.
So, I'll make a motion that the Finance Committee not approve the citizens' petition.
Not recommend, we don't approve.
Or... Not recommend.
How he said, yes.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have an opinion. Not as they would. I would be of the opinion, because we haven't taken a position on citizens' petitions in the past, of not taking a position, certainly speak to it. And you can make your position pretty clear by speaking to it. I don't think it's a good precedent to, you know, pick and choose which ones we take a position on. I understand why, but I, I just don't think the select...
So, we don't, don't print it, but at least we have a consensus now for the Select, for the Finance Committee.
We needed that recommendation, anyway, but...
We wouldn't, but if, if...
So, don't put it on the...
Don't put it on, in the booklet.
Okay.
But we know where we stand on it now.
And please speak to it at the town meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, you guys as well.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chuck.
Chuck, we can both stand up and say, again, we're agreeing.
We haven't voted on it yet.
All right, so I don't see this as a select board policy. I see this as a Finance Committee policy. I'm not inclined to break the precedent of not weighing in on citizens' petitions. I don't see the urgency that, you know, if I were on FinCom, I would very well feel differently.
I mean, my only comment is that it directly affects, I mean, as a select board, you know, the Finance Committee's making these financial recommendations or not. The select board, we're looking at future projects potentially being seriously hindered. I mean, we all love our schools, and we need our schools to be top-notch, but when you ask the select board to pit it against a DPW building, a fire station, a police station, and when you start making commitments like this, you're hindering those future projects. You're taking, taking, you're handcuffing Finance Committee and the select board from making those decisions. So, that's, that's why I'm a, I wouldn't recommend it. And I think that's just one of the reasons, I think, Brian, you brought up another. There's many, but, I mean, it's a great idea, you know, on its face, just to look at, well, let's put as much money against this as we possibly can every year. It comes with a huge cost, and a reckless cost, if you ask me. But that's my opinion.
So, I'm with Karen, I think, I, I follow the lead of FinCom on this one, but I don't think we need to vote or print in the, in the, in the report that we don't endorse it, but we can speak to it at town meetings. And I think, you know, we can just, I state for the record, I also do not support this, this article.
So, we have the consensus of the select board, we're not supporting this. So, I do, I do not support the argument. So, Fred has a different opinion on putting it into the booklet, so...
No, I, I think of all the citizens' petitions that have come forward, this has a significant, potentially significant, tough financial impact that we should be on the record, right in the, in the documents, so people can see it, that we do not support it.
I, I thought we had agreed to that. That you guys wouldn't, but that we do. Our recommendation will be in the booklet.
No. Do we want it in the booklet?
Yes, oh, God, yes.
Yes.
This is our credit rating, guys.
Finance Committee in the booklet.
I think this one's too dangerous.
And I'm happy to speak to it.
Finance Committee, are we okay with the report that I sent around to include in the booklet? Yep.
Thank you.
Robin has an electronic copy, if you need it. Have a motion to adjourn. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, guys. We have, we still have some articles to vote on.
We've got some articles to vote on. I have a request for additional... I think we need to add some more logistical info into the report about the childcare is gonna be available.
Thank you.
That the cafeteria will be a, a child-friendly environment.
Where would you put that, on mail-out? Is that something we could do?
I mean, we've got other types of logistics in here, right?
Yeah, I, if we, some of these larger articles, you know, I just remember from the past that, and we hear constantly, some of the hindrances are, they didn't know that there was childcare available in the parents'. So, if we could saturate it, somehow get it on the mail-out, and also, even on the, on the electronic boards in town that we put out for the town meeting. I mean, that's another great way to say childcare available, or contact.
I mean, under the, under the town meeting procedures, there's a list of things. I, that seems like the logical place to put it in the report.
Yeah, I was thinking, you're talking about right here?
Yep.
Yep, so those are the town moderators' comments, so I think we would have to ask Tim if he was okay with putting it in there.
Oh, after his name at the end of that?
Well, could we put it in, under the select board section, then? Which is on page one? I think that's more, I think that's more likely to be seen.
I'm, I mean, I'm in favor of making it as prominent as possible.
And as, and as permanent as possible going forward. I just think this should be, this should be a standard thing that we develop.
Yep.
So, we maximize participation.
Yep.
Who is, who is offering the childcare, and is the town paying? What, no? Are we involved, is the town involved in any way in that?
National Society of Students, and there were two representatives that the town clerk is, has reached out to about coordinating that, for that to happen.
Okay. Great.
Yep. And then, like I said, the cafeteria will be designated as...
Child-friendly.
Child-friendly, so, I mean, and the gym is child-friendly, too, right? But I just think people tend to be a little more straight and narrow.
I think just to be clear, the people in the cafeteria can vote, right?
Yep, yes, they can vote, they can comment.
There's gonna be a moderator that's gonna be in there also.
So, all right, so we'll add that to the page one, under the select board section.
So, the language will be between the town code 41-3, and here is the format in which the information was presented. So, I'll put it in between, right after the town code, but before, here is the format.
Okay.
You okay with that?
So, above here is the format.
Yeah, here is the format, yes.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and in any other way, over the next month, we can get this out.
Yep.
I know LCTV, you know, we can't save enough.
Even, even if it's just a static page that looks between whatever mark puts on, maybe this static page comes up and says, reminder, town meeting this day considers available.
Contact, have an opportunity to get it.
Okay, so, let's see, I have us...
Do you think it's better there, or on the last line, right before it says, the select board welcomes your feedback, right? Or before we, it has our names? I, I'm not sure where it will stand out better.
I mean, in a perfect world, the future ones, you'd have it in the, the front cover on the corner, like childcare available, you know, or some stuff, because you get that in the mail. It's like, some people just, I can't go with this. But if it's right there, but I don't wanna tamper with, you know. It's, it's new. We, we haven't had this, really, in the past, I don't think, correct? We have? And we just haven't advertised it?
We have.
In what way? On, in the, in the... So, we do have precedent somewhere.
So, I don't feel strongly either way. I think it's the font that's gonna, that is gonna get anybody's attention.
Yeah.
So, I think whether it's above here's the format in bold, or whether it's above the select board welcomes your feedback in bold, either one is fine with me. To Chuck's point, we've got a lot of empty space on the back cover as well.
A little flop up.
The postage, USPS doesn't want us to touch, but there's, like, a whole other half of that page.
Yeah.
There's touchable.
So, let's add a line on the back cover as well.
We need adult care available, too.
It's up on the front table.
Um, let's see, okay, so I have us needing to vote still on 1, 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11, right?
I don't think on 7, right?
No.
Do we have 7?
We, we don't have enough information to vote on 7.
So, we're gonna wait on 7, but it'll be a recommendation pending.
That's right, okay.
So, 1...
6, 8, 10, 11.
6, 8, 10, 11, well, 13, I had 13.
13, they're trying to do a presentation.
13, we're gonna wait until after the presentation, I think, and then vote.
All right.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we make a motion?
Let's hear it.
All right. Motion to recommend Articles 1, 6, 8, 10, and 11.
Second. Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor? Aye.
So, Jim, the last one, so Article 7 will say recommendations pending, because we don't have anything, and then, are we gonna try to vote tonight on 13, once we hear the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, now, we just wanna vote the order, and then move on?
I think moving number, the amendment on the Shaker Lane funding with the previous vote to immediately after Shaker Lane seems like the only thing we need to do.
So, 12, this one's the number two?
Yeah.
And then your bills of prior years goes to number three?
Sure, yeah. I mean, that's probably gonna be consent.
Yep, right.
Right, so...
We don't have to do bills of prior years anymore, like, consent, because it's the...
Oh, you're right, you're right.
Oh, right, okay. Because it's nine, nine, 10, so...
So, just for clarity on the motion, though, it's not what's up there, because there isn't a 4.
Correct.
That, that 4 is not, so I don't know where the...
So, 1 would be Shaker Lane debt exclusion, 2 would be amend previous vote on Shaker Lane, 3 would be bills of prior years, 4 would be collective bargaining agreement, 5 is the transfer from the trust funds, 6 is accepting the Mass General Law 200A, 7 bylaw amendment to the Hawker-Pedlar law, 8 36 King Street transfer from stabilization, 9 bylaw amendment regarding the posting of the warrant, 10 increase the income limits for the senior circuit breaker, 11 bylaw amendment regarding the title Director of Veteran Services, 12 bylaw amendment regarding the title Director of Finance and Budget, 13, 13 resolution on climate action, and 14 the citizens' petition.
Does that change your vote for each of the earlier?
No, because... No, because we're changing it after.
Vote, uh, vote to our, supporting the motion to recommend changes as defined by Matthew.
We didn't say which numbers we voted, we just, we support such.
Oh, the articles. I did say numbers, though, so I want to make sure.
Okay.
Just, yeah, I'm going to motion to rec, as I stated, motion to recommend Matthew's order of the articles.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye. Now, we have to close it?
Not yet.
Oh, that's right, thirteen.
We have to wait for thirteen.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. And I think we're up to four D now. Town Clerk, Discussion of General Code and Updating of Select Board Regulations. Madam Town Clerk.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. So the reason I'm here this evening is, I think you all know that your regulations have been worked on for several years by several different people, including Mr. Rambaka. And I think that we have kind of taken two steps forward and about ten steps backward. We are trying to really get it up to speed as to what actually in your regulations should be there. There are a lot of things that are in your regulations that are in our town code. There are things that are in there that don't really belong there any longer. So I've reached out to General Code, had conversations with them, and they have explained that they are willing to compare what we have in your regulations and how it compares to what we actually have in our general code. They will do an analysis and present an analysis showing all of that. They will do the legalese and tell us what really will not affect if we pull something out of your regulations. But they will also tell us, this is a duplicate, this is a triple kit, and this really doesn't belong there. And they will explain everything as to how it compares, why it shouldn't be there, and why it should actually be in your town code. And so that's why I'm here this evening, to kind of tell you what I've been doing with town code and why I think we should really move forward with this and put it in their hands. They also will take a look, because after about five or six years of doing all of our bylaws, you know, what their, what their ability to do and what they're supposed to do is I send them what the Attorney General approves. They put it in there, they pull out the old, they send us everything, and we put it into our books. But they don't necessarily have to go in and say, oh, pull it out of here and pull it out of there. So what they will also do is look in our general code and say, oh, by the way, did you look at this code? You might want to pull this out of there as well. So they will also look at our code to say you might have something that's a duplicate or doesn't actually agree with another code that you have. So don't look at that as well. So I'm here tonight to kind of get your blessing to look mostly at your regulations and try and get them corrected and brought up to speed and see what, where you want to go.
So I'll add that as we've been going over the years, updating our policy, we still have one big massive policy document that doesn't necessarily get updated when we update our policies. There's like another document that says what, you know, what that, those policies are, like, are, the policy document, I think, that's out there on the website is probably ten years old now, right? And it doesn't reflect any of the changes that we've been working on. And because it is one massive document, it's virtually impossible to change, it's hard to search. You know, it still has all the financial policies and the HR handbook and everything in it. And we voted to take it out, but we haven't updated, we don't really have the ability to easily update that document ourselves. So going to the town code model will make it easier. And having separate documents or policies for all, separate policy documents for everything will be so much easier to update, so. I do have one question on the town code part. As we update things, is it possible then, what happens to the history? Can people search what it used to be? How would they do that on the website?
It'll tell you what, when it was updated and what town meeting and what article and all of that. So we, I keep all, anything that was changed, changed in the vaults, so any changes that were made are still on file. It wouldn't tell you what it was changed from, but we do have the record of it.
You'd have to use the Internet archives to get the old stuff?
Yeah. Or come into our office and pull that paper out. Good old fashioned.
So the organization that does this is General Code?
General Code, who does our, they do our town code now.
The E-code?
Yeah, E-code.
Support. And so is this part of, do we have a contract with them? Is this part of that contract?
We have a contract with them. This is over and above.
Yeah.
Because it is such a legal, legalese, so to speak, and the, the select board regulations isn't part of it. It's never been part of it, so we could possibly get it added in, because we're due next year to upgrade with a new contract, and we could possibly get them to, to start doing the regulations every year as well. So anytime you add a new regulation or decide you want to get rid of a regulation, we can do that every year. Or at a ti, at any of your meetings when you decide on a new policy. If that policy is given to me, I can send it off to General Code and they will automatically upgrade it.
And, and you're just asking us to start, whether you should start this process? Is that what you're asking?
I want your blessing and I can give them the go-ahead tomorrow and they will give me a quote and I will know how much it's going to cost and
Okay, that was my question.
I think that's, yeah, I'm in favor of that, of doing this.
I just think that it's, what you have on the website is just so old and it just is so
Brutal.
Yep.
It's horrible, I'm sorry, but it's just, it needs to be, it needs to be done. And so many people have worked on it and it just, I feel like we're spinning our wheels.
Yep.
Me too.
Great.
Yeah, the only question I had is, I had the cost question, but the, where we're going, the Charter Committee has a couple members here now going through a lot of these policies, so I think we're going to just have to make sure, there's going to have to be some coordination here on how we they're going to make some recommendations based on what exists, right? So there'll be a little bit of work on the back end of this, depending on when it comes through.
Yep.
So that's the only
If, you know, if I get your blessing tonight, I send the email out tomorrow, they can have something within a week, I would know. And they said it would take about a month and have everything. I don't foresee all of that. Would have a product online.
It's part of our charge. I mean, policies, literally, the select board's here for, so.
Right.
Anything to improve that is going to be a huge help.
Yeah.
If I may, through the chair?
Yes.
Is this going to hit this current fiscal year or is this going to impact next fiscal year?
No, I've got it in my book.
You do?
Trust me.
It's on, Kim.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, thank you.
All right, I'll do a, move that the select board vote to support the analysis of the regulations so that we can move forward with the project as defined by the clerk.
I'll second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Clean Lakes Committee, Mark, do you want to speak to this one?
Sure, so, I've been to a couple of the Clean Lakes Committee meetings lately, and they've had a member that hasn't appeared at the meetings in several years. They've reached out to try and figure out why he, why, why the absence, and they have had no luck in getting him to attend, and so they actually requested we remove him from the committee.
And this is for, this isn't for a, this is like for a backup chair, right?
This is the alternate for
Yeah.
Bill Pond. Bill Pond.
Okay. No questions for me, any? Nope. All right.
Move that the select board vote to approve the request of the Clean Lakes Committee to uphold the vote of the committee on July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five to remove Member Luigi Lassavio from the Clean Lakes Committee.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Sustainability Committee, we have the Climate Declaration Article Discussion and Presentation and a presentation by Michelle Zelenka. So whoever's going to get started? Okay.
Hi, yes, my name is Michelle Zelenka, and I'm the Regional Energy Manager with the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. I just wanted to provide an update on the Climate Action Plan that I've been working with the Littleton Sustainability Committee. It's been quite a process. We've, oh, yes, thank you, yeah, there's a presentation there. I think it's, sorry, it's the one after this presentation.
Tell me when. Stealing all your thunder, Charlotte. This one?
Yes.
There we go.
Thank you, yes. So I'm with the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. This is one of thirteen regional planning agencies established in Massachusetts. Regional planning agencies basically help with increasing municipal capacity, providing planning services, coordination, things like that. Now, one thing you'll notice here is that Littleton is not part of the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, part of their municipalities. Littleton is part of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And so the reason why I'm here is because of a Energy Efficiency Conservation Block grant that the towns of Pepperell, Dunstable, Littleton, and Townsend received. So part of that grant was to assist Littleton with the Climate Action Plan. So that's why I'm conducting this work now and, and working with the Sustainability Committee. And so I just wanted to kind of go over what a Climate Action Plan is and why, and how Littleton can benefit from one. Next slide, please. So we've all heard about climate change, but just want to ensure that we're, we're all on the same page. So climate change refers to shifts in weather patterns over time. These can be caused naturally, but in recent years, this has been caused due to human activity. An overabundance of greenhouse gas emissions due to industrial processes, traps in heat, and this results in global heating. Now, we tend to focus on the heating aspect, but Earth is a system, so that creates additional challenges like extreme weather, drought as we're currently experiencing now. So a Climate Action Plan can identify a town or region's sources of pollution and then set targets for reducing these emissions. Typically, this goal is net zero by 2050. That's part of the state's wider goal. But a Climate Action Plan serves as a roadmap to provide actions that a town can take to reduce pollution as long as, as well as prepare for the challenges associated with extreme weather and climate change. And now, Littleton is not acting in isolation. As I mentioned, the, Littleton is part of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, or MAPC. So there have been regional climate action plans that Littleton is, is a part of and can kind of build off of that progress. So for example, the MAPC has a Priority Climate Action Plan that sets short-term goals for the region. And then a more comprehensive Climate Action Plan is also in the works for December 2025. And I just wanted to highlight this because Littleton is part of a wider region, so pollution doesn't just stay within the town of Littleton. A lot of this effort is regional, and Littleton can build off of the suggestions and the previous efforts. So highlighted here, you can see for the region, the, it's the Greater Boston region, which stretches, obviously, from kind of the southern part of Boston all the way up to New Hampshire. So you can see buildings are the highest source of pollution within the region, and then this is followed by transportation and energy generation or electricity generation. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to quickly highlight that Littleton kind of follows closely with the regional pollution inventory. So buildings represent the highest source of pollution, and then this is followed by transportation. And then waste is a very small component of that percentage. And when we talk about measures or actions that the town can take, we're referring to several sectors. So the main three are going to be energy, transportation, or stationary energy or buildings. But a Climate Action Plan also includes actions related to waste and then natural and agricultural lands. Waste in agriculture and natural lands, they comprise a very small percentage of pollution, but they're very important in mitigating some of the effects of climate change, especially natural lands. So a Climate Action Plan includes measures related to those sectors as well. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight that this isn't, this sort of planning isn't new to Littleton. Littleton has made a lot of progress toward their pollution reduction goals, and so I have some examples on the next slide here. So within the building sector, we have the Green Communities projects. The Littleton Electric Light and Water Department has made a lot of progress in supporting renewable energy in town. And then, of course, the Hazard Mitigation Planning efforts. And then the Town's Master Plan also has provisions to help guide the town and prepare it for climate change as well. So this isn't something new.
You want you here? No.
Oh, sorry.
We're going backwards now? Because you're done there.
Yeah, all I had was, I just had a roadmap. So currently, we are kind of conducting focus groups with different groups in town and, like, planning departments. And then we have a townwide survey that is active. So I had a QR code for that survey and just wanted to highlight that.
We got the email today about the survey.
Okay, great.
Yeah. It's not in there.
Thank you.
QR code.
No worries.
Didn't translate.
Well, yeah, thank you so much for letting me provide you with updates on the Climate Action Plan and happy to take any questions or
Is the Climate Action Plan needed for the, I forgot, the Green Communities two point O, whatever, I forget how they rebranded?
Oh, like Climate Leaders?
Yes.
Yeah, there is a, I believe, a requirement for like a net zero action plan, like some sort of kind of roadmap for that.
So for those not familiar, the Green Community, the Climate Leaders, is that what it's called?
Yes.
It's like green communities on steroids, like there's a lot more money available for projects. Like, we're very limited in what we can get now. It's basically replacing light bulbs and things. But the, the two point O, there's grants for like over a hundred thousand dollars for projects and things that are available.
Yeah, it's for kind of more, I guess you could call it like deeper retrofits, so kind of fuel switching and, and things like that, yeah.
Great.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Charlotte Donens, co-chair of the Sustainability Committee. Thanks so much for, for having us all here tonight. So we're just going to make a very brief presentation about the Climate Emergency Declaration. We'll go to the next slide. So briefly, what is Climate Emergency Declaration and why are we talking about this now? So a Climate Emergency Declaration is essentially a non-binding statement by the town that would recognize climate change as an urgent threat. It would commit Littleton to creating the Climate Action Plan that Michelle was just talking about. And it also signals the need for this kind of community-wide collaboration around sustainability and resilience. And the reason that we're talking about this now is obviously that we're already And the reason that we're talking about this now is obviously that we're already feeling some of the effects of climate change, heat, storms, flooding, et cetera, droughts, as Michelle mentioned. Also, the ball's already rolling. 2,400 governments, including Lexington, Acton, Concord, some of our neighbors, are already making similar declarations around a climate emergency. And for Littleton, you know, the sooner we plan, that means the more effective and more affordable our solutions are going to be that we can propose for our town. So, the Littleton Sustainability Committee has drafted up a declaration that recognizes the urgency of the climate crisis. It lines up with the state's net zero by 2050 target, and it sets the stage for creating this Climate Action Plan for Littleton. So, very briefly, this is the draft. Glad I printed out a copy, because that's really tiny writing.
Can't read that.
So, first of all, it essentially acknowledges that we are living in a world with rapid climate change, and it acknowledges also the importance of protecting our environment and our, that we can envisage a better and more sustainable future. Secondly, it acknowledges that, like other communities, we are experiencing the effects of climate change across, you know, the breadth and depth of our community. And then, thirdly, it essentially resolves that we, the residents of the town of Littleton, declare that this is a climate emergency, and that it is a threat to our town and to our residents, our communities, our businesses, et cetera. After that, it resolves that we, the residents and members of Littleton, we call on our town government, we call on our community, we call on our businesses, we call on our state leadership as well, to support our efforts in reducing our emissions and actually meeting some of these climate targets. And then, finally, it resolves that this climate action effort, whatever the shape that would take for Littleton, would be, the benefits, the costs, et cetera, would be distributed fairly amongst our residents, and that would also include the provision for the protection of our natural resources, including our trees, our open spaces, and the places that we all love so much in Littleton. Next slide. So, what will the Climate Emergency Declaration do for Littleton? What it will do will be to sort of set a tone for a coordinated action. It would guide the development of this Climate Action Plan, and it would also strengthen Littleton's opportunities to apply for grants and to have these kind of regional partnerships that would also help us out. Importantly, what it would not do, it does not impose any kind of a mandate on a resident or any of our businesses, does not commit funding without additional public input, and it does not require immediate changes to our bylaws, zoning, budgets, et cetera, that would have to follow community input and planning as per normal channels. So, it's not a mandate, it's a statement of our direction. It's essentially an intention setting, it's a sort of our collective vision for the future that we want to see in Littleton. So, we've proposed an article for the full town meeting, which would ask Littleton residents to formally declare that climate change is an emergency and a threat to our community, and that we continue to plan, and that we continue to take action to reduce our emissions, to protect our open spaces and our resources, and that we essentially commit to ensuring a sustainable and resilient future for Littleton. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the work the Sustainability Committee has put into this. It was a tremendous amount of work, and it's very much appreciated. I, personally, I see this as more of a reflection of our values that we already have, and I think it's important to codify that and to set goals for what we want to do in the future. So, I appreciate the way this was structured very much.
When, when, when do we start doing mandates? I mean, I think, I, obviously, I'm in favor of this, and I appreciate your leadership, and I think it would be very important to start talking about how, how you enact some of these things. How are you going to, how are we actually going to get to net zero by 2050? We have to make those decisions starting now if we want to have a realistic chance of doing it, which means we're talking to the Facilities Director, and we're talking to the, the building, you know, Municipal Building Committee, and, yeah, so.
Yeah.
No, I guess there isn't a question there, but no, I, I want to keep, I want to keep moving, and this is a good first step, but it's not, it's not the goal, right?
So, maybe just a comment back to that is, as Michelle mentioned, with the Climate Action Plan, that is one way we can get very granular about what Littleton actually wants to do and the steps that we would take. And the public forum is also a great way for the public to kind of communicate what exactly they do want and what they don't want out of that as well. And then, we've had quite a few conversations within the committee about just capturing the work that's already been, it's already been going on in Littleton as well, and for instance, with the Shaker Lane School Project, and the fact that's already going to be lead silver, and we're already looking at many of the buildings, municipal buildings in town, reducing their footprint through existing kind of mechanisms. But, yeah, I mean, 100% agree, and the more that we can participate in those discussions, I think, and kind of lend that lens to the planning in town, the better.
Thank you.
I'm all in favor of this. I think, yeah, I, I think this is a good first step. I think there's a lot of steps that come after this, but this is a good way of, like, getting it out there that we're on this track.
I just put, you know, to answer one of your questions, it's, the state needs to put the money where their mouth is, with some of this. You know, if you start showing communities, they're serious about it financially, and you're going to offer assistance, because there is a cost to this, obviously. And then, our partners, you know, LELD, it's a huge component, talking about the power piece to this, just kind of communicating with them, getting them bored, so they have the same vision that the town, the community does, so this is the first step, you know, but that's one of the, our major links, you know, is where, where LELD fits into this outside, you know, just the community in general.
I also think it's important to recognize that we can make choices that might have a longer-term payoff.
Oh, sure.
Or, 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 or a choice that's 1% more expensive but saves 20% in terms of energy use. And I think just saying, like, well, the state has to pay us to do this is not, is not quite right. Like, we, we have to take some, we have to have some skin in the game.
Oh, we will. I'm just saying, the incentivizing it, you know, you're talking about members of the community, this board, but when you're, when you're dealing with energy companies and all of the other things that come into this, there's so many more pieces that we need to drive, drive home, that's all I, but this is, this is setting us in motion to where we want to be by 2050.
I think some of it is cost, but a lot of it is just education, too. When people find out that it doesn't really cost as much as they think, everyone thinks all these climate things are so expensive, and they're not. We went through this with the Shaker Lane, when we were looking at the all-electric building and, and the, and the system we ended up designing, that turns out that the system's basically the same cost when you factor in its lifetime, but the energy savings was huge. And we weren't even factoring that into the cost when we were originally planning it. So, just these type of things, and like, when, when you build some of the, the green buildings where people basically have no energy costs, or almost no energy cost, you spent a little bit more to build the building, but the payoff is enormous, so.
Quick. What is the, the second level of Green Communities, Select?
Leaders, Climate Leaders?
Climate Leaders. I think that, dating back to, as far as the Select Board, the School Committee, with Keith's help, largely, we, we did a lot. And one of the reasons we don't get much from Green Communities anymore is because we got so much in the beginning, because Keith was on the front edge of that, and we, we played along, you know, and we, he found opportunities, or the schools found opportunities, and we, we just found ways to make that money work for us, so, and then more and more communities signed on, so they had to share it, and, so hopefully, we can be the kind of leaders with this new tier, as we were early on when, when Green Communities funding, and that goes to the funding part as well. You know, if the state's going to make more funding available, let's get after it and try and find any way we can to...
And I think with the Green Communities, we've taken advantages of, as much as we can, and we're just running out of littler projects that we'll, that we can fund through Green Communities. The, the new ones are just costing more than we could get funding for.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Do we want to take a motion to recommend 13 now?
Yeah.
Can I suggest, Article 13 says it's a Select Board article, it should probably say Select Board Sustainability Committee, is the ones bringing the article forward.
I agree.
You got it?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry.
Recommend, or, excuse me, move that the Select Board recommend Article 13.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, guys. It's a start.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Now we close the warrant.
Do we need to go back to that?
No. Gary, Gary can make it up.
He's got it.
Do I? Do I, though?
It's way back.
I'm just moving to close the warrant, right?
Second. Seven? Oh, damn it.
Moved that the Select Board, clo...
I had a perfect dream!
No, I just, not quite. The October 28th Special Town Meeting Warrant, moved to the Select Board.
Mark seconded.
Well, say it.
I'd second.
All right. Moved by Gary, seconded by Mark. All those in favor? Aye.
The warrant's...
I did it the first time Gary did it, it was much shorter than that.
I don't want people to get confused that it wasn't October 28th.
Hooray. All right. Next, we've got 4G, this is a fun one. Human Resources.
Yeah. So, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Select Board, I will, I just wanted, as I kept you updated, we had a very, very strong interest in the Assistant Town Administrator's position, and we collectively, as an internal team, as part of a leadership team, really tried to look at what, what kind of experience do we want that next person to have? Do we want them to have finance experience more so than planning experience, or HR experience, or DPW experience? So, we really, and we concluded, and I want to thank the Finance Director, the Fire Chief, and the Human Resources Director for being such a vital, vital component, team members for the process. And there were 40 applicants, of which we narrowed it down to, the first round was going to be seven, in which we identified the top seven, and we had, we had, we had a Plan B underneath, underneath those seven to do that, but, and then we went through, through the seventh. And really, it was, Tony, really, he rose to, rose to the surface, rose to the top. And one of the things that, one of the things that the team commented after was the experience in multiple areas with being MCPo certified and certified, he's a certified planner. And considering how much activity we have and growth that the community is currently in, and the potential as we continue to grow, it was, we thought that, you know, sticking to really focusing or really looking at the planning experience within, with all the individuals would, would help, would help be, be in the best interest of the community. So, with that, I made the, we've had conversations with, with Tony Souza. Tony is currently the Assistant Town Manager for the Town of Oxford. He has been at the Town of Oxford since 2020, in his current role as Assistant Town Manager since 2022. He clearly has a balance of experience between larger mid-range cities and smaller, smaller communities. And I believe Oxford is 16,000, 16,000 individuals, residents there, and it's something that, you know, focused as, as a planner within community development, and it's, but it's something that I think we all felt really, really, very, very good about this, and about, about Tony. We think he would be a great fit for the team, because the team here is so strong, as I, you've heard me say time and time again. Everybody, the employees, just all, all the way around. Yes, you too. And, but, but collectively, the interview team thought that Tony fit right in, and we feel, we feel good about it. And we'd like to respectfully request that you affirm the appointment of Tony Souza as the next Littleton Assistant Town Administrator, please.
Yeah. Come on. Come on up.
This is your next interview.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm really thrilled.
Still?
Yes. Great to be here, great to be, I'm very excited. And Littleton came to be a great, great fit, the more I learn about this community, the more I want to learn more. And under the Town Administrator's leadership, working alongside with you and the awesome staff here, very, very much looking forward to this opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you. We're, we're thrilled to have you join us. Your experience is really just a perfect fit for our community, I think, and where we are and where we're headed, and we're really pleased that you, you decided to join us, so, welcome.
Same. Thanks, thank you for applying. You know, I, I'm one of those HR geeks, that, I, I did my own research, and you, I told you, I...
You totally.
Dug through it, you know, just a great record, you know, and I, you know, you and, I noticed Joe Lane kind of popped up, somebody you may know, working on the 320 project and things like that, so, he was a fantastic planner for us as an ATA, so I, I think, anything like him, you're going to fit us very well, and especially in the, all the, all the work and projects we have going on, plus Jim needs a little help, I think, also at the, at the top, just to kind of, you know, he's going to only get grayer, so. So, no, thank you very much for joining the team.
I have to put up with you. Yeah, I echo what, what my colleagues have said, I think it's exciting that your economic development and your planning background, I don't know that we have an appetite for a casino, but it's nice that you have that background. If Sal Lapoli gets a hold of you, he might, he might. We'll never know what we're going to get.
We already had that fight.
I also noticed that, I had some friends that went to Pope John, and you, you were involved in the, in the transition into affordable housing. I think that might add something to do, might have pulled a little high string from our Town Administrator when he saw that, that you had been involved in a project like that. No, I think, like everybody said, this, you've definitely got the chops, and we look forward to, you know, working together and doing great things. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think it's a bold choice, starting a week before town meeting. But, welcome. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I look forward to it. I think you're a good hire. I do have one question for Michelle. In the last booklet, it was, the Assistant Town Administrator was a grade 20, and now it's, this is a 19. It said Assistant Town Minister, Finance Director, do we reclassify it when we took off the Finance Director?
Yeah, so I worked with the Collin Center, who is doing our current class and comp study right now, and they suggested the 19 would work for stripping out that Finance Director.
Okay, okay, we just, can we just make sure that everything's updated, the affect group, like that, so?
Yeah, I think the Finance Director is a great controlling element to move that up one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's go.
Awesome. All right, move that the Select Board vote to appoint Tony Souza as Assistant Town Administrator at grade 19, Step 7, effective October 20th, 2025.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor? Aye. Welcome.
Picture.
I did my hair. I spent a lot of time doing my hair.
Wait, Oxford knows about this, right?
You guys, wait a second, you guys didn't take a picture when I got my vote. No, we want to, we want to see the progression.
We did that. That was in a dark hallway that we had.
Come on, Jim.
No, Jim, done again.
You're hired.
I'm not. Then all of you guys get out and I'll stand there.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
Are you wanted somewhere?
You don't even bother. You should say, go play, go play in dress.
You have to be in your.
Don't worry.
You want to be the chair in the middle? Be the chair in the middle.
Okay.
There we go.
Don't worry, we'll do anything funny with these pictures.
We need this for the evening.
Tony and I have the ball covered.
Oh, yeah. Considering they need the help, right?
Oh.
I don't know how you do it. I don't know how you do it. How you done it. Thank you. Good stuff, Joe.
Yeah.
Oh, he's.
He's going to be great.
I think I get enough of you.
What's that?
I think I get enough of you. I think I get enough of you. Not take, just talk. It's okay. It's all right. It's all right.
Good job.
It'll be.
All right, it's 8:15. So it must be time for public input.
Somebody forgot their glasses, so first I want to trust if you.
Oh, mine.
The gym.
Then I don't care.
Keep them.
Starting to see why we need an ATA now.
Thank you.
Exactly.
That'd be more than I helped them.
Thank you.
Okay, Rob around 25, June Road. I raised my hand as you were discussing the warrant before it was closed, tried to get attention. Article six, I have a question. With regard to petitioning, and so you, you folks are familiar because of the safety zone, that again, I thank you for taking the action that you did. I did knock on doors. I was an individual. I didn't have an organization. Annalise is here representing, you know, Yes for Littleton as an organization. My question, you know, those two trigger points, if you will, as well as you folks all have to get, I don't know what it is, 50 signatures or something like that, you know, to be elected. If you were to knock on doors, if I'm to knock on doors, I'd like clarification, if I can, with regard to is this broad language such that I can't go knock on, you know, doors, et cetera? Or is it such that Annalise and Yes for Littleton have now comply with this proposed, you know, article?
So I'm going to go out on a limb. I'm not Diane, but under, there are under the exceptions. There's an exception for political and for public policy purposes. So, political purposes would definitely qualify for Annalise, and public policy would be, you know, speed limits and things.
Thank you. I wanted to just make certain of that before we get to town meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think that's an amendment.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Pertaining to Article 1, my question, so, I think there's a lot of precedent language. I know I've written to all of you. I don't hear any discussion of it as you close the article. Disappointed with regard to the arguments that I made that it didn't merit any conversation among you. Just park that. On page 1 of the town report, in that Town Code 41-3 identifies Town Board Recommendations. That's where I was going with my statements, you know. You allow Finance Committee, even when there's not a Finance Committee Budget Report, yet you allow Finance Committee to routinely comment on anything in a special town meeting? I think that's worthy then of some of the considerations that I made with regard to park and rec. In my letter to you, I tried to point out how some of your working committees, et cetera, are often filled with things like park and rec, sustainability, could have disabilities. I, in the last six weeks, have approached those different groups. Some of them have actually said, we got in this too late. Okay, well, that's not on me. And yet I, I broke through in some, I got their endorsements. I didn't break through in others. All of this is with an eye towards trying to inform the public. And in this instance, with regard to Article 1, and I appreciate what you addressed earlier tonight, so thank you. The connection with regard to the ballot, that's an important distinction that makes this article somewhat unique. Mostly, your town meeting articles don't have a ballot required, you know, element to it. This one does. And therefore, the document, as far as I'm concerned, is this town meeting report. This is last year's, not this year's. But this is the piece that gets mailed to every household that's occupied. It's not the special newsletter that's going to come out and applaud you for doing that. It's not the 01460 that people will see. It's not meetings that people can see on LCTV. This is the thing that gets mailed and informed to everybody. And hence, I view this as the only document that we have a chance to inform, that you have a chance, to inform the public of what's going on. With that, I want to point to this, you know, your, your first page one, your paragraph of 41-3, the, the Town Code. It says recommendations, and that goes on, if any, in concise explanations of each article, including the financial impact of financial articles. Okay. With regard to Article 1, it's the biggest item that's come before the town dollar value. My understanding is the biggest ever. So I think it's got significant repercussions. I want to go back to where I know you all there. The MBTA vote. The town voted that down two times before they voted it down a third. If the town votes this down, the kids and our school and our public deal with seven to 10 years of delay to young learners. That's one aspect of it. Another aspect is a part that I don't see anything in the warrant right now of Article 1. I don't see anything with regard to Brian's statement, the discussion you've had now at two select board meetings or joint meetings with FinCom, with regard to the triggering effect. The, the consequences financially with regard to a no vote are quite devastating in terms of their implications. You've, you've had an extensive discussion, and I applaud you for it. I become more informed each and every time, as I hear the latest iteration with regard to Town Council and the different elements of Henry with regard to what's going to be triggered and what's not. But with regard to it being silent right now, I don't know how the public's informed with regard to the ballot question, with regard to the implications of this vote. And therefore, everything that you can do, which I think in 41-3, you've got the ability to do it, with regard to what's the financial implications of the vote. So, I appreciate your time. I know that I could go on for a long time, so just be quiet. But I can't, I can't overstate, I think, how, I think that an informed public needs to exist on matters of importance, and this is an extreme matter of importance from many elements. Lastly, I appreciate the town friendly and everything that you folks can do, and it was said earlier tonight, put it on the cover, wherever you put it. The part that I continue to think that's underplayed by my generation versus the young generation that exists with the parents that I'm talking to pretty routinely, regularly now. They don't use babysitters. Earlier tonight, you talked about the 7 o'clock, and then it's 7:15, 7:30. Goodness, it's going to easily be 7:30. If we don't end debate, it's going to be 8 o'clock, 8:30, and those parents, their kids are in bed. So I'm going to lose a whole bunch of informed public that have taken the time to be informed, and they're going home because they can't stay out this late. And that's, it's a problem for our community, but I'm trying to point out how different elements can bring our community together with informed and get voters on the record with what they want, as opposed to more or less overcoming and overcoming, or losing, if you will, an informed public and votes, because they can't do it. They have to get their kids to bed so they can wake up the next morning to go to school. So, thank you for all your time.
I'm just going to note that as a former working parent, who had a commute and who had three young children all at the same time, they were all little all at once. It was the dumbest thing I've ever done. But anyway, parents have to be able to get home. And they have to be able to feed their kids before they can come back out. And so there's just, we're either going to lose people because they're not going to be able to get there in time, or we're going to lose people because they can't stay that late. And I appreciate, we're, you know, I, I agonized over that one. But I think it's, you know, I, I, the tiebreaker for me was, and I do view it as a tie. I think it's roughly the same kids that we're talking about. The tiebreaker for me was, if we change the time, how many people are going to be thrown off by that? And so, I wanted to stick with what we've been doing.
And so I, I respect that, and I certainly understand and recognize that. I, I think the part that maybe I spoke in general, where I'm, was thinking I was addressing was with regard to the cafeteria. I think it's great to identify the cafeteria as child friendly. I know that, that we think the gymnasium is child friendly. I'd argue it's not.
No.
It's not at all.
Not super.
And therefore, I heard some boilerplate make this routine sort of comment. I think that's a great idea. I think this should be just, that way we can still, in the public, I can make it work. Or, I missed that one, but now I understand how it can work and how I can keep my eyes on my kids. And that would be the element that I'd say. The National Honor Society, I tried to say a month ago at, at this meeting, the youngest generation, their kids aren't going off with National Honor Society. They're not. They don't. Their, their parents, grandparents, et cetera, it doesn't happen. And therefore, as much as that's an accommodation for my generation, we'd see it fine, but it doesn't work for this one. And I also, again, in closing, I've spoken with some young moms who say, you know, this vote's down, they're crying and they're talking about leaving because they can't stomach what's, what exists right now. Kudos to Superintendent Clancy, trying to put, you know, make it as best as they can, but that, that building is a problem, and it needs to be done. And we don't get MBTA, you got three cracks to get the community, you know, on board. We don't get that. This is a, it happens or it doesn't. So everything that you can do, whether it's identifying the triggering or aspects of the article, you got to point out to as many people as we can. So, appreciate the extra time.
Thank you. Mark, were you going to say something?
I said, at one point, we tried Saturdays, and they didn't work any better. We didn't have any better turnout when we tried Saturday.
Yeah, because everybody's got, got to get their kids to all the, you know, things. So, hi.
Hi, everybody. Annalise Tabor, 291 Goldsmith Street. I am the Chair of the Yes for Littleton Ballot Question Committee in support of Shaker Lane School. You all know me by now. Hello. Just sort of seconding what Rob said. So, my, I've been working on some marketing materials around getting out, you know, the word about childcare at town meeting. And so I was wondering if on the front, I don't know if it's mood point now, but on the front of the, the document, it says, you know, the Littleton Middle School Gymnasium. I was wondering if it would make sense to say gymnasium and cafeteria, as like literally the location of town meeting would not just be the gymnasium. It would be both moving forward. Just a, just a thought. And then that way, it would be right on the front cover. It would be on all the materials everywhere. It would be, you know, it is now in these two locations. And you could even say something along the lines of child friendly, family friendly voting, however you wanted to wordsmith it. That was sort of, just when I was working on my marketing piece, I was thinking that. So whatever you do end up choosing, our print deadline is coming up as well. So just let me know. And just thank you all for your support of the project. And thank you to FinCom as well, although they're not here anymore. But just wanted to thank everybody.
Do you want to announce any upcoming events?
Oh, boy. Yes, we had a breakfast. Thank you.
It's tomorrow.
Yeah, we have a breakfast tomorrow morning, hours from now, 9:30 at the Senior Center.
And you don't have to be a senior to go.
You don't have to be a senior to go. I promise.
Is it an informational session?
Yes. Thank you for, I'm glad I had my notebook with me.
And food.
And food. Right, no, I know. So it's a, it's a free breakfast and an info session. So you'll be able to ask questions of, Dr. Clancy will be there, the Superintendent, members of the Building Committee will be there, members of the, I believe Mary Lee will be there. She's the architect of the Shaker Lane Project. So, really good place to be if you have questions, and also, of course, a free breakfast. So, not, not a bad, not a bad gig. So that's 9:30. And then, now you've got me on a roll because I've got my notes. So, our next, or the next Shaker Lane Community Forum, which is hosted by the Building Committee, that's on the 29th of September at 6:00 PM at Shaker Lane School. And then the, there is another community forum on Saturday, October 18th, and that's 4 o'clock PM at the center, the Senior Center. And then on the 21st, which is a Tuesday, I believe, the 21st of October, is the final info session and tour at Shaker Lane School, and that starts at 6:30.
Right. Essentially, I, I was wondering this during the Building Committee. Steve, maybe you know, that September meeting, is that at Shaker Lane? Is that also a tour? Or is that just the meeting?
That's just a forum.
Just the forum.
Yeah. So the last tour, the only other tour we have on the books is the 21st of October.
Okay.
And again, that's all hosted by the Building Committee. So, yeah. So these four events are hosted by the town. So. Thank you for that question. That was fantastic. Appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, member updates. Let's see. I went to the MAPC Council meeting. It was an orientation. It's very informative. And I attended the Shaker Lane Building Committee meeting the other night. And also, the amount of time that the Building Committee has put into this effort is just so impressive, and we, we really owe everybody on that committee a huge debt. And there's folks that started out on that committee, like Stacy Scott from the School Committee, who aren't on there now, but also put in a tremendous amount of effort, and it's really appreciated. The Lab 9 tour, was that really after our last meeting?
Yeah.
Man, all right. So we went to look at Lab 9's facilities, and the ones here in Littleton. And there was a, Jimmy, Jim Arciera was there, along with his Chief of Staff, and a representative from Jamie Eldridge's office as well. Got a tour of the factory and where they put these units together. They're just doing really, really cool things that it's, it's exciting to see, and they've got lots of potential. Couple, a new project that they've got in the works that I thought was really interesting is, it was just in The Globe, actually. You're going to be able to go through airport security in, like Framingham, and get on a bus and go to the airport and not have to go through security at all. You're, you're done.
Wow.
And they have the, I guess, Lab 9 has the contract to create those.
Satellite.
Those satellite things, because part of the, I guess, part of the requirement was that they had to be able to pick them up and put them into another test location. So it was right up their alley. But many thanks to them for, for hosting us and for all the great information that they shared. That's all from me.
Nothing from me tonight.
Oh, I have a bunch of stuff. So I attended the, MAPC had a Affordable Housing Trust Roundtable last Thursday. There was a lot of talk about the real estate transfer tax on large, large, expensive properties, basically. Communities have been petitioning for the right to add an extra levy, basically on the transfer, and the money would go to affordable housing.
Would that be any property or just residential?
I believe it was residential, the, the base proposal is residential property is over a million dollars, but communities can set the threshold and communities can set the percentage. So that's working its way through the legislatures now. Gary and I toured the Baptist Church last week, looking at potentials for that. There, the Littleton Road Race was on, was yesterday. We had a great turnout, and then thanks to everyone that volunteered, ran, thanks to highway, fire, police, and everyone for their support. It was beautiful weather and a great event, and it's. It was beautiful weather and a great event, and it's just a nice community event. So I also, before our next meeting, there's several things coming up. The Lyceum's holding a program on October 3rd with a musical group called The Love Dogs, which sounds very, it actually looks very good. And there's several events going on October 4th, Oktoberfest, the Country Fair, and the fire station's holding an open house. So you can spend your day going around getting free food, and apparently a beer now over at Oktoberfest. The, I went to the last Charter Committee Meeting. They're going to have a public forum on October 14th in the Senior Center. And finally, I'm holding office hours this Wednesday, four to six.
That's right, office hours are back.
That's all I have.
All right, Gary?
Right. I will mention that office hours will be scattered a little bit more. We're not locking into a specific time, so we're gonna, you go see, maybe see it on a Monday at different hours, or Friday, just give people more flexibility to show up, as well as us more flexibility to attend. A couple of things, just schedule-wise, keep in mind, was it Drunk or Treat is October 25th? So that's another event on top of the Oktoberfest.
It's a big one.
Let's see. Many of us attended Mrs. Pennard's funeral and wake, so just keep, keep Chief Pennard's family in your thoughts. We also found out today that last night Deputy Patterson's mother-in-law passed away, so there are in our thoughts as well. Couple of good things, tennis courts are done. I know, I saw that came out in our, our write-up, but, and no pickleball on the new tennis courts. You have to go to the high school to use those courts for pickleball, but.
And where are the new courts located, Gary?
Right next to the middle school. So four beautiful, newly-lined fenced courts, so I'll take advantage of the, the exercise. I had, let's see, DPW, Final Touches on the Crosswalks, that, those of you, I know we brought it up, I think, last time, but, you know, we've got a lot of crosswalks that had a lot of work done, visibly noticed just driving, you know, the lights flashing catches your eye on a lot of those, but not just that, but some of the other ones that are aligned. And we're going to continue to work with DPW and State to get, get, make sure that we're, you know, trying to get as safe as we can on our roads as our community grows. Let's see. Like Mark had mentioned, we, we visited the First Baptist Church on the Common. This is an iconic building in town. We met with the, the church leaders, who have some sad news, that the, the facility will probably be coming up for sale, and they wanted to reach out to the town. We, we reached, went in and looked at it, and we have a lot of, lot more to come on this, but the historic value of that, that structure and other things, it's going to take the help of the community to really find out what we can do with that building, and whether there's nonprofits. We can get into a lot of things. I think we're going to try to get a subcommittee together to brainstorm, community leaders and things like that. I, I do believe the building's that important to the center, especially as it, as the downtown grows, just to have, have that space be something. If Westford has the Roddenbush, to give you an example, Acton has a few other buildings as well, you know, Theater 3, things like that. So just more to come on that, but we're just kind of exploring different options and some of the protections we can put on that building. Let's see. I always mentioned, Jim, I noticed today reminded me, I think when we get any new employees, I think you should bring them in. I know with this, we have like the police, I know, come in all the time, and some of the, obviously the ATA and some of our department heads, but any employee, I think, if you have them come in on one of our nights, just introduce them, and so we can put a face to the, you know, whoever it is, the new name, the new person working in finance. I don't know. So that's all.
Yes, sir.
Something to think about.
Will do.
We, you know, we had talked offline a little bit about some of the more work to be done on speed limits, Shattuck Street, some of the discussion on how this is going to be configured over the next year, whether it remains a one-way end, like Karen had mentioned, or whether there's a different routing system there. Lot of things to come on that, but not just Shattuck Street, but other, other streets as well. You know, I, I brought up a joke, somebody, a resident on Russell Street had said to me that they were wondering when we're going to pave Russell Street. It's been a couple of years now. It's really bumpy through there. And I said, well, I'm, like, I think soon. He says, well, please don't, because traffic now is going like 20 miles an hour. Little, you know, tongue-in-cheek there, but, so something to think about. We're going to start looking at, really, just an overall look at all of our, our streets and see where we can be, be safer community as, like I said, as traffic increases and our community grows. Let's see, what else did I have? I will, I have to say it, because I had members on Shattuck Street come up to me. A no parking sign is gone that was on Shattuck in front of the Senior Center. I don't recall seeing one there, but I don't know, is it a parkable space right in front of the building out on Shattuck? Or not? I don't know.
I didn't think so.
But well, just, they, obviously, if you're a neighbor, in a neighborhood and you see a sign that's no longer there, people are going to speak what happened. I think that's, that's a lot, but, and once again, welcome to our new police officer and our new Assistant Town Minister.
All right. Minutes, no, Town Administrator update.
I'll be brief, Madam Chairwoman, just to let everyone know, we continue to work with the owner and developer of 550 King Street of, and one of the most recent tenants, Precision Optics, which has slowly been moving into, to the building. That is a company that had relocated from Gardner to Littleton. As a result, they were busting out at the seams and. If you remember through, also through the letter of support, that you had approved, that I, that I sent to them, encouraging them to relocate here and why of all the advantages, they were, they were back, they were in front of the EACC, which is an act of the Economic Development Incentive Program. That's EDIP, and through the Executive Office of Economic Development for the state. And they were awarded last Wednesday $1,290,000 for a state tax credit award. And that is a result of, a direct result of them, with their expansion, they're going to create 86 new jobs that are going to be here. So that is fantastic. Thank you to Mr. Lopoli for the, for the efforts on, on that, on that part. The center on Shattuck Street, the books are closed, and we are looking at under-budget. And that under-budget is in the, in the, in the tune of approximately $480,000, but in all likelihood, that's probably going to be a little bit more. And that does not mean we're going to get that money back with the change order that's coming in, the change order is coming back.
Coffee machine.
That change order, it just decreases that, that amount to the contract in which we had with Commodore Builders. So ultimately, it's less that's turned around that we have to bond for permanent financing. So which is, which is great news. Council, Cultural Council was awarded a grand of $7,000, and, which is something, they do fantastic things with that. We also, let me see, also, oh, today. Today, the Chief, Chief McCurdy and I attended a building care in the Neshober Region that was hosted by UMass Medical Center, and on a guest of the governor and Congress, Congresswomen Turehand were there. And it was the new location for the Satellite Center. And one, one point that they really emphasized was, was there's a big enough area there as much as there's going to be an area for, to land a helicopter and, and things of that nature for emergency services. But it's also the land that it's at, it's on Main Street in Groton, that 490 Main Street. And that is going to, enough land there for, for expansion. So as much as it's going to be a satellite emergency facility at, at first, there will be expansion plans. And that's going to be aggressively pursued, because at this point, a year ago, around this time, you know, we had all the communities were, were pretty upset and, and very, very concerned and taking appropriate action. And as a direct result, the UMass, UMass Medical Center stepped up and they did a tremendous amount of researching and trying to identify proper locations and sites. And that was the, the site that, that won the final vote. And now it's, you know, an aggressive push to stop building, permitting and stop building for there to kind of balance off now the emergency services that will have someplace else to go. And so it was very, very well-attended, and everyone's excited about it. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. I went out of order there, sorry, folks. So back to appointments. Appointing Jim Garrity to the Conservation Commission. And some guy named Gary Wilson.
I can do the, I can do the first.
LC TV. Any questions? Okay.
Move that the Select Board vote to appoint Jim Garrity as an Associate Member of the Conservation Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity.
It's sworn in.
It's sworn in.
I cannot appoint myself to the next one, but.
Do we have enough to vote for this one?
Yeah, we have a quorum.
Yep, we've got a quorum.
I've, I've served on the LC TV Committee for a couple of years now, since I.
Move that the Select Board vote to appoint Gary Wilson as a member of the Littleton Community Television Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 30th, 2027.
A ringing endorsement.
Moved by Matthew begrudgingly, seconded by Mark. All those in favor? Aye.
Comes around, goes around.
All right. Let's talk about the orchard.
So, yeah, so we, I think everyone's seen the report from MAPC, and we just said we were going to have a discussion at it, on it at some point. We can do it now, or we can do it at a later meeting, if you'd rather. But the report, they got a lot of feedback from the residents, from our two public forums. I don't know, you want to fill in, Matthew?
I mean, I think it's useful, I think it's useful in two ways. I think it does do a good job of outlining the concerns that people have, and I think it's going to guide, if we have to go through a process again in the near future to do, to decide to do something with the orchard, I think it would help guide us. But I think we're in a fortunate position of having a really first-rate tenant that's likely to be there for 30 years, and that we're not going to have to really, like, struggle with it the way we did over the last five years. So it was actually, I think, I think it was very useful for a couple of reasons. I think that it helped people be heard. I think that it helped to reframe the, sort of, the, the push to, to have the tribe involved in the orchard and understand where they were coming from, because one of their, one of their representatives spoke at one of the meetings. I thought it was a positive, a positive process overall. I'm just not sure that there's a lot of actionable stuff in it right now for us to do.
Yeah, I think over the next, you had mentioned that with great tenant in there, but I think we had a great tenant in there for the first.
Fair enough.
Twenty years. So I think that's future board now, 20 years from now. You know, I don't know how young our gentleman is that owns it now, or that's leasing it now, but, you know, eventually, the Select Board will have to make tough decisions if, you know, if it starts to get into reprint. I think we've, we've created enough documentation and policy moving forward that I think it'll help future Select Boards be able to make decisions appropriately, so.
And I think it also, like, we still have to figure out what to do with the house and the lower barn and things like that. And we should have, start serious conversations more on that in November, December timeframe. And that can help guide us. Also, not directly related to the report, but there is an open house for the orchard coming up on October 18th at 2:00 PM through daylight hours, I assume.
Yeah. We'll be publicizing that as much as possible.
Yeah.
Because it's, what he's doing there is really cool.
Yeah, if it's any, anywhere close to as fascinating as your last podcast.
No, he, he's amazing.
I learned more, like I said, in that 20 minutes.
Very impressive, very, very impressive.
I've learned in my lifetime when it comes to orchards. So much so, we bought six fruit trees, and we had them planted ourselves. Now I have an orchard. I looked it up on ChatGPT. Anything over five trees is an orchard. I'm an orchardist, but just in case you guys need a professional. Anyway.
So, so segueing right into the next item, which is the, the plan. So I toured the orchard with Emily Schrader and John, and Karen was there. And he's just a, he's such a magnificent geek about trees, like he was showing us his favorite trees on the property, and there are a lot of weird ones, like there's a sassafras tree. And did you know that sassafras trees were native to Massachusetts?
Yes.
I didn't. And also pawpaws, he's going to grow pawpaw trees, which are native to Massachusetts. So I'm just saying, there's a lot of stuff there that he's just, he's great. He had all these plans for growing trees over rocks and then taking the rocks out so it looks like they're standing on stilts, and it's, you know, amazing.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah.
But we can move on to the next item, which is the maintenance plan.
Okay.
The MACP, MAPC plan is published on the website now for everyone.
Yes, it is.
Under the Orchard Group Board.
Under the Orchard Page, yeah. Which is just now a repository of documents. So Emily Schrader is, Littleton Conservation Trust gave me, got me her name. She does monitoring of their conservation restrictions, some of their conservation restrictions. And so she is, she has a lot of familiarity with the process. She has, she has not done agricultural preservation restrictions, but she doesn't, she feels comfortable looking over it. I will, I will also add that this would be in addition to the state's annual monitoring of the APR, which we get, which is, I think, more of a pro forma thing. But the idea was for Emily to engage with the, the town. I think we should do it on the anniversary of the lease being signed. And the plan would be for her to generate a report, like talk about any issues she sees, talk with John about what he's doing, and then we would have a public meeting, whether it's a part of a Select Board meeting or a private thing, with John and any of the Select Board who want to attend, and Emily, to discuss the state of the orchard for anyone who wants to attend. John can talk about what he's going to be doing the next year. And at that time, anybody who has concerns or says, you know, it would be great if we could do this in the next phase, we can write that into the plan for the next year, and Emily can look at that in one year to follow up on it. So the, the quote she gave us for this year is $2,000. She said this, this year would be probably more than usual because she has to do an initial plotting out of all the boundaries, which is time-consuming, and that she thought, you know, 1,500 was a reasonable thing, like year over year. So I, you know, this was one of the things we said we would do. I really feel strongly that we should, like, hire someone who's a professional. And I think this would put us in a place where we're actually monitoring the orchard for real, every year.
So I was lucky to meet Emily, and she was fantastic. She really.
$2,000.
Probably 1,500 next year.
Very knowledgeable. And yeah, I think, I think we would be in good hands.
And I think, I think the idea was to use the rent that John is paying to offset the cost of the monitoring.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, I'd love to tie that in. We had talked about some of, you know, an annual, I'm not, I don't know if we said visit, but some, maybe tie that with an annual visit from the Select Board and the members that are available. That we kind of can walk through some of the, this and visualize it and see.
I think that's a good idea. I think we should do all that in like a week. Like have, go, have us visit and then have the meeting with John and Emily. And anyone who wants to attend.
So we'll have like Orchard Week?
Orchard Week, yeah.
Like Infrastructure Week?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Yeah, sounds great.
I, I agree with all of this, I think we should also add Eric in, so that we can monitor the buildings too, because, because she's not going to be checking up on the health of the buildings.
You're exactly right, and I specifically excluded the buildings from it, because she, that's not her domain.
Yeah. Great point.
Is that, are you comfortable with that number? I mean, is that something?
Very much so.
Okay.
Yes.
If, move that the Select Board vote to approve the Orchard Monitoring Project in the amount of $2,000 for this fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Town Administrator update is accomplished, minutes.
There were a couple typos.
Yeah, I noticed that, too.
At some point, Attorney Tom Harrington, oh, here it is, at the bottom of page 150 in the packet, it says Attorney Tom Harrington, Town Couse, C-O-U-S-E, should be Town Counsel. And the other one was talking about the docks and the state rights to the land, it says, if a dock is built above the low water mark, it is actually on state land, I don't think that's correct, I think if a dock is built below the high water mark, it is on state land.
Interesting.
Because the land underneath the water is state land, so it shouldn't be above the low water mark, it should be below the high water mark.
And that could be important. I know, it's not important, but that could be important. Climate change, I mean...
You buy a few trees and you think you...
I actually looked up the state statute.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I was going to say we should strike it if we're not sure.
Or, or we should, or, I mean, perhaps someone can just go back and listen to that sentence, I don't know whether the person misspoke, or it got mistranscribed, it could be that they meant to say below, above the low water markets town land, so I, I didn't go back and look at the recording.
Okay.
I don't know how to, whether we should strike it, or, or, or try to correct it.
Do you want to continue it? Continue the minutes?
I guess I could go watch the video.
I don't think it's fundamental to the minutes, though.
No, it's not.
So I would vote we strike it.
Okay, why don't we just strike that sentence?
I moved that the Select Board, let's see, vote to approve the meeting minutes from September 8th, 2025, with after-striking.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
I'll second that.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's it, Littleton.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.